You know, via email because we'll have a lot of sheriff deputies and EMTs and fire trucks. And just there's going to be a lot of activity.
And shooting.
Yes, and they do use, um, they use.
Rubber?
Rubber rounds, yeah, so like there, there is noise and, um, it's really quite, uh, quite a scene for those who have been in town when they did that drill last year. Um, so we just kind of want to let the public know that that is going to happen, um, to not be alarmed. Um, and then, you know, just a big thanks to, to all the, um, entities who, who plan for things like this and, and do, do the drills. It is a lot of work and, and a fortunate reality in today's day and age. So, um, that is coming up. We will send out an email, um, through, through the town. And then, yeah, just a big thanks if you, if you see those folks putting that on.
And I, I had two things that I needed to do, and I don't know that I've mentioned it to Erin. I wanted to make sure that the fire department has the lockbox. We now have a lockbox for the key to, to this building. It's outside the door to the whatever side of the, what is that, east? Yeah, east, on the east side, we have a lockbox. And so the fire department now has the code for that to be able to get in. And that's important because if Erin isn't available or someone isn't here, we've got to be able to let, uh, people, the parents and whoever into here. And then the second one was, um, Deputy Workman had spoken to the UDOT shed about using the yard if they had to set up a incident command post because it would be a direct line of sight. And he was told that wasn't possible. So I've directed, um, some communications to the UDOT regional manager and to Deputy Workman to talk, for them to talk, and Dan Hinkley's checking that out. Um, you know, it's not like we'd be doing it on a daily basis needing to use that, but I think it's something that can probably be worked out with UDOT, but it probably comes higher up than the shed. Any questions? And then we, I know we'll all remember to ask Linda to send that out since my phone blew up last time. All right, then moving to number six, which, which is the update on Utah Denebakea and the Towne Bluff Design Review Committee meetings and the current status of the Environmental Justice Government-to-Government Grant. Today, we had our DRC meeting with Janet, she, Melanie Daniels from UDB, and then Jen, Erin, and myself are there. We, I initially sent out a, uh, meeting invitation for Tuesday, not Tuesday, I'm so, my days are running together, sorry. For this Thursday to meet here as a combined meeting with Utah Denebakea. But, uh, Dr. Chi asked for some additional time to be able to prep her board and get some things organized, which, um, Erin and I had anticipated that might be the request. So we will have a joint board meeting, and I'm really sorry to do this to everybody, but it will unfortunately be Tuesday morning, nine to one, for those of us that can make it. And I'm encouraging everyone on the council to be here in person as much as, of that time as possible. And the purpose is to really, um, as Erin indicated, um, the sub-award grantee, agreement that we have to have, to really pound out any differences, any questions, anything that we have so that we can go back to the EPA and say, this is a go. Um, it was a really positive meeting today. I think we're all getting a little giddy and enthused that this might actually move. And so, um, that's, I'll send out a, an agenda. I'll confer with Dr. Chi about making sure that the agenda meets with her approval before I send it out. But I will also make sure we have lunch and snacks because that will keep us all engaged.
Two clarifying questions. So first, we will meet at the CCC building. So if there's anything physical that we need to view at the building, that's important that we're all there. Um, we did ask if a hybrid session would be helpful, but it certainly wouldn't be for the airboard. But if for some reason we needed to have someone dial in here, let me know very early on. There's a lot of internet, but in-person is going to be great. My second question for you is, I guess it kind of works out, we have a meeting that night. Are you thinking it's a work session or a special meeting in order to vote during that meeting?
Um, I would call this a work session and have us vote in our regular meeting at four o'clock.
Cool.
In part because how the council votes will really depend on if we're all on the same page with UDB at that work session. And I also don't want them to feel like we, uh, like we're forcing a vote. So, well, we'll vote yes or no, and moving forward on Tuesday's meeting. And again, I apologize, it has to be on Tuesday, but in order for us to hit some of these critical deadlines with the EPA, it couldn't be Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. It would need to be Monday or Tuesday, so. Any questions or thoughts on that? additions? Erin, Jen?
Do you and Melanie were able to hand out some presentation?
Yes, so we definitely want materials available to board and council. Um, so everyone has kind of an aligned view of what we're looking at. Um, I did meet with Melanie Daniels because they have some materials, including like the NDN grant that, you know, if we're, if we're saying that, you know, grants are part of the packet, we want everything. Um, we will meet again Thursday to pull all that together. Um, and then I will shuffle it by Ann to just see the level of detail because certainly there are a lot of documents that are pretty, pretty detailed. Um, but if we're, if we are putting together packets, it might as well be a holistic view of how we've gotten to this point, so we can all be on some. So, yes.
And what we talked about in the DRC was actually having, um, Melanie and Erin put together the packet and then sending it to the printer and getting it printed in, in one nice spiral thing so that everybody has their pages aligned and we're not doing what I'm doing, which is shuffling and trying to find the right page. But we have it in a little spiral thing. And it will, you know, it's not expensive to really do, and certainly in terms of time, for Erin, Melanie, or me to be sitting here copying twenty sec sets of this stuff is just not efficient.
So, and then I guess I should ask though, um, you all, so we're going to have, um, we'll have grants, the partnership agreement, the existing redevelopment partnership agreement, and any kind of acquisition paperwork, budgets, and, um, like a timeline of, you know, how we've gotten to the point we're at today. But in terms of questions that you all might have, would there be other documents that you'd absolutely want included in? Oh, in maps?
Well, not just maps, but kind of, but overall, it's our goal, you know. Are we going for an education center? Are we going for office buildings? Are we, are we just like to go?
I think this is a good time to have that discussion about what's the mission statement for the building that we've never been able to get to.
Right.
Because we don't have a joint mission statement and the Cooperative Cultural Center name was something we just slapped on it as a makeshift two and a half years ago. And I know there've been some, some questions on both sides, like, do we want to keep that name? Or do we want to change it and how do we do it? So I think that should be a really, um, I'll add that to the agenda, discussion about the mission statement. And it may be that we have a general mission statement for the community and then each entity has its own. We're a government agency, we're running from here, and you're a cultural, education piece. But overall, it would be nice to have a broad mission statement as to why we have this partnership, which would be good for all of us to be thinking about in a different name down the road. Don't want to change it in the middle of the grant. I mean, the middle of the submission of the grant. Yeah, we'll really have them confused that we're, we've now got another new entity in here. But certainly something for the future. I know UDB, um, has expressed that concern too. They'd like a, a different name. Okay, and thanks Erin. I know you and Melanie have a fair, fairly hefty project. Excuse me, moving to the new business. Number seven is the inquiry from Moab to Monument Valley Commission regarding banners for seventy-five years of film. And I think the next few are yours, um, Erin, so go ahead.
So we've received a request, um, along with San Juan County and the cities of Monticello and Blanding. Um, the Moab to Monument Valley Film Commission is celebrating their seventy-fifth anniversary. They do represent both Grand County and San Juan County, so that's why they're reaching out to, you know, our, us as a municipality. Um, they are, you know those street banners that, you know, hang up in Blanding, Monteflo? They are offering to cover up to twenty-five banners per city, um, in cost. They could give us up to twenty-five banners. Um, but each city needs to determine whether, A, we have a spot to even display them, and B, if we would want to take on the install and, and things like that permitting. And so I've included a banner mock-up, which has a couple little pictures from around our area. And in my initial communication, um, with the Film Commission Director, I did indicate that Bluff doesn't really have a spot, but that I would bring it to you all. And if we needed to change that, uh, or needed to consider that, we would. Um, but I just wanted to get a firm answer either way, so I can get back to them and give them a yay or nay on their ordering, so.
Do you have any idea how long those banners would be up?
That is a great question. So I know that they are doing things this fall. Um, they're going to do a big, do, and I think they're also reaching out, don't hold me to this. Um, I think they're also reaching out to the, um, Bluff Arts Festival regarding maybe some coordination with that. But I believe it's this fall, and I think they would order them here pretty, pretty soon. And then I didn't see anything that would hold us to having them up for any specific amount of time, but just whether we would want to, whether those cities would want to include them in their rotations throughout the year, so.
Yeah, just in the bottom where we put them, um, so like they're talking to, um, honestly.
I think it would be nice to have a couple that they could use for some advertisement with the, with the arts festival if they want to, or, um, you know, if we want to just put some things on one of the walls here or, or something, something like that, I don't know. I mean, it's, oh, if, if, if they're not targeting us, I think it's not a bad idea to, to list a couple.
I would say we should get a couple of them, maybe three or four. And then as we move through our sign ordinance discussion at the work session, uh, we can see how that fits in. We already know that in the sign ordinance, we've, we're going to have to have an exception for the federal and state grant signage, that those temporary signs are going to be probably more like permanent signs for two to three years. And they're going to be bigger, more likely than not than what we're, we're going to be talking about and possibly passing. So this would be a good time to talk about how does something like this fit into the discussion on banners and wavy flags and tho- those types of things. But if you need to get back with them, I, I would say, you know.
Four.
Four, and I could see where, maybe, um, Dan will probably fringe, but maybe someone like the, uh, the foundation, the community foundation would like one. And they do have that space, it's pretty much in the middle of town. But I think this is a bigger discussion, but to keep moving rather than saying no.
I think twenty-five is a little aggressive, and I did just find, my apologies, I shouldn't be a little. Um, they are hoping, it's not a requirement, hoping to have them up through it either, so. Um, but perhaps in my response to them, four, and we are not committed on where they're going, um, but we'll, you know, there could be areas throughout town. But it's not going to look like Blanding's, um, lined street poles, if that's a fair response.
We don't have street poles, one.
So, the, um, the picture that you sent was vertical. The one place that I could see to put one is along the school fence, but it would have to be horizontal.
And then that's a discussion with UDB as well, like, do, how do you feel about it? But I think to keep moving, does everybody feel okay about four and, and then?
Thank you.
Yep.
All right.
Do you want to take eight?
Eight is update on Bear's Years Marathon hosted by Blanding. So Bear's Years Marathon, um, their Economic Development Office is looking to host, um, that marathon again. The targeted date is November second, uh, that's a Saturday. And we had asked, well, before, during, and after the last marathon, but again, that we really want Bluff to be very involved because the finish line ends right at the CCC building. Um, in my early discussions with Ben, I did indicate that we have no idea what those grounds are going to look like in November. I mean, my hope is that it's a complete construction zone, um, but that might be a little optimistic. Um, so I wanted to just let everyone know that's still on their radar. We have a couple major items that we really need Blanding to solidify before it moves. And I, I asked very politely, I said, you know, I, since you already had this race qualified, I assume you cannot change where it goes. And he said, no, it is, like, this is the, the location, this is the finish line. So I said, in that case, we really need you to tighten up, um, the EMT situation. And he did admit that last time they had not even reached out to the county about EMFs. Um, so that'll be big. I've indicated the town is very concerned about traffic in Cow Ca- in Cow Canyon, that they really need to work with UDOT to either get it closed or partially closed. But from a safety standpoint, that is probably our number one priority. Um, early indication is that that is a difficult request, but I'm going to kind of keep pressuring that, that that's pretty important to us. Um, it is additional cost for them to, you know, get the signage, the signs, those, um, you know, uh, light, light up, so, you know, they have to be out there three weeks in advance or something like that. It can't just be the day of. Um, but I did indicate that, you know, that is our primary concern, that they really take care of that traffic. Um, we talked about aid stations, we talked about, you know, volunteers. And then the big change, potential change, and not just, you know, if anyone's listening here, nothing has been, you know, this is early planning. Um, but instead of doing vendors in front of the CCC building, since clearly we don't know what that's going to look like, um, potentially moving it down, um, one block further. And so coordinating with the fort a little bit closer to see if we could utilize some of their space. So, um, if there are any questions that I can take back to them, I'm happy to do so. I'm glad that we're on their radar. Um, you know, I think in some ways we're kind of, well, I mean, I guess the town could always just say no, but we're, they're kind of locked to their race course. Um, but there's still a lot of time for the planning process. And, uh, you know, we just wanted to get out really early, you know, these were our concerns from last year. They did have fairly solid participation. They also, Ben also indicated that they had about, I think it was thirty-five to forty runners who took the shuttles from Bluff to the half or to the start. So they will definitely do shuttles again this year. And they recognize, you know, it's important that we spread out that tourism. And that's the whole purpose, is an off-season race to spread out the tourism. But he did indicate that the shuttles, um, that you asked for, Ann, were actually pretty heavily utilized, so.
Yeah, what they didn't push out with that was the use of hotels, motels, space like that. And, and that was the, one of the, the multifaceted questions I asked. If you're going to end it here, having run marathons, I don't want to end a marathon and then have to look for a ride to go back to Blanding in cold sweaty clothes. And the medical town was the other concern, like, when I got there, there was, there was nothing and continued to be nothing. And I think if we're going to participate, I was glad to see that Ben was reefed out early. Um, and in fairness to Ben, he had this handed to him at the last minute. So, um, it wasn't Ben that dropped the ball, but it was.
And it was messy. It was not super well organized. And I think we really felt that, you know, there was a pretty severe lack of volunteers because of the lack of planning, certainly at the finish line. And I mean, I know there were runners coming in and, you know, there were aid stations not even set up yet. So hopefully it's a, it was an eye-opening experience. And, you know, if they want to do it again, you know, they, they know some of the gaps they need to fill.
Yeah, they're going to have a real eye-opening experience if someone gets hit in Cow Canyon or collapses at the finish line and they don't have EMTs there. I mean, that's going to be a real wake-up. And I don't want it, none of us want it to happen, but we don't want it to be because we didn't prepare for it. And I, I'm hopeful with this conversation starting earlier rather than, um, two days before. And the thing about, I do want to, um, thank the Ford, if anybody from the Ford is listening, you all did a great job of covering the finish line when you saw that it was, uh, rather messy and limited. And the second piece of it was, I forget, let me think about it for a second. Well, when I think of it, I'll come back to it, but I really do want us to be talk, oh, UDOT, that's what I was going to say. I can, that certainly put Ben in, in contact with Dan Hinkley, who is Jared Beard's replacement, because you don't ask UDOT the week before to close the road or monitor the traffic. And, and yes, it is difficult, but it's not impossible. And it's something that UDOT knows how to do and they do it fine. But you, they just need to get on this, like, probably right now, make the request. And, and if he hasn't talked with Dan, you know, get him in touch with him. But, and thanks for making that meeting, Erin.
Do we know if this, uh, do we, do we have a calendar date for the women's marathon?
Yeah, let's go Google it. Um, that's usually how I find out about them coming.
It should be the week after, but.
It's usually like the Tuesday after. Yeah.
Yeah. But, but, yeah, that, but that's a good question because they are pretty consistently here.
Yeah. Yeah, they have been for the last five. Let's see here. Um, Tuesday, November twelfth.
Oh, good, we have a little, we have a little.
Last year was like three days, right? Yeah. But, you know, from very limited Googling, which again, that's how I found out that they're here. Show up, there's a bunch of people running around town. Um, it appears to be November twelfth.
They probably already booked with Malia too.
They, they probably are.
Well, good, that, that's a good question though. At least we won't have the trifecta that we had last year with the eclipse, the marathon, and the manly marathon. So do you want to take number nine on the request from the Women's Business Center of Utah to waive fees?
Alrighty, so I don't know, I don't remember where we got in our discussion about, and, and I just might be completely, I, I, every so often, just a different list of priorities here. Um, I don't know where we got in our discussion or if it was the previous council probably that was discussing waiving fees for nonprofit entities or, you know, we've got some frequent flyers who, you know, would, would ask to, to waive fees for rental of the Bluff Community Center and/or Fire Mesa Kitchen or, you know, things that we rent out. And so I got a request, um, through Ally, I don't remember her last name, I apologize. Um, but she works for Women's Business Center of Utah, which is a nonprofit organization that provides resources, um, to women-owned businesses and entrepreneurs. She did say, you know, anyone can attend these, but they do have a focus on women's, women-owned businesses. Um, so she's hoping to host, um, an informational session on Wednesday, June twelfth. Needs the community center for about two hours, would need about three hours in total. Um, and, you know, as we were talking about logistics and everything, it came up if, if there's any way that, that a rental fee could be waived for a nonprofit. And so wanted to put this one specifically on the agenda and/or potentially not to add another thing to a work session, but talk about that process and like, well, how does it look like if, um, someone is asking you all to waive fees and who approves that?
So where I think we were last year was that if they were a nonprofit, Malia could go ahead and waive the fee. And Linda raised a good, um, question is, are, do we intend to waive the cleaning fee? And I think that that's a fair question. It's one thing to waive the rental fee for a nonprofit, but the cleaning fee, we have a direct impact with staff. And so we could put it on, um, the work session, I don't think it'll take that, it would take much time to squeeze it on with the, with the Fire Mesa Kitchen rental contract that will be on the, uh, work agenda next week. And then everybody can think about it. My inclination would be to stick with, um, saying if you're a nonprofit, we'll waive the rental fee, but not the, the cleaning fee. But I can throw together a resolution for us to talk about next week when we talk about Fire Mesa Kitchen, because that gets us into the kitchen rental piece. Is everybody okay with that? If I just throw a couple alternatives out?
That, that is what the business owners of Bluff have done. When you have the bowling festivals, you, you fall away from the, or like the rental fee that you've done. And honestly, rather than being expected to clean it up yourself, it's, it's very nice to say.
Bye-bye. Yeah, I, and when I was talking to someone who does cleaning, the person made a statement that everybody's idea of clean is different. And if we have a, if we have a particular, and I said, like, for me, Bill, if you're listening, I don't do floors. So, too bad, too sad. Um, yeah, so I think that that's a good one to talk about while we're talking about Fire Mesa Kitchen. And I was glad Linda raised that about the cleaning fees because we'd never really broken it out. We just said nonprofit and let it go without.
Part of it too was so that every time someone asks that they can use the facilities, we don't have to debate, should we charge them, should we not? Because then it becomes really difficult. So, um, that was the other reason for doing it.
And then just a little plug, because I, I have been talking to this organization. They do have a lot of really cool resources and trainings and classes. And so it was really important to them to like come down to the community and be able to share. They're also going to spend time in Blanding and Monticello, and so I've made them come to Bluff too, and we'll figure out a way to, to host you. So, um, yeah, lots of actually really fantastic resources, um, available. So excited that that is coming to our community.
Sounds good. We should be able to get back with them then, after the work session.
I appreciate it.
I'll get it on the agenda.
She's like a super planner, and so, yeah, for June, we've got time to figure that out right on. Not next week.
No, I, I think that's really, um, those kinds of resources are really important to the community, particularly if we're talking about a strategic plan of, you know, thoughtful growth and development, like, how do we get those resources out to the community? Great, thank you. I did not go to the San Juan County Commission meeting this morning. I had looked at the agenda. There were interesting things, but nothing that affected Bluff directly as a town. Erin, did you listen to part of it?
I did listen to most of the meeting, and I would agree with that statement that there was nothing Bluff-specific.
Then moving to planning and zoning, which is eleven, I've moved that to, actually, that'll go, not to the work session, that will go to the next meeting, which would be March twelfth. And then a report on February twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four, opening of the Community Center Emergency Food Pantry. I wasn't here for that, but my understanding from Ginny Burns is that there were four hundred and some people for the month of Mar- or the month of February that used the food pantry, and that there were like twelve or thirteen families that came in and actually used the emergency food pantry on Tuesday.
There were twelve families, uh, which represented twenty-seven people, and it was busy the whole time. And it was a really positive experience.
So the little plug to go with the food pantry is that not this Saturday, but the next Saturday, reminder for everyone is the benefit, uh, pavilion sale for getting rid of all your stuff that will benefit the food pantry and help them, uh, get, be more fully stocked for the emergency food pantry. So I know I'm going to do some serious digging and getting stuff out. I also just want to report on that issue, the emergency food pantry, that I'll bring it back for everyone to vote on and approve. But I have done a lease for one year for the space here with the storage space at the CCC because with the, uh, food pantry moving in here as well, we needed at least to cover both areas, so I'll bring that next week. So this has moved quite quickly, given the. So this has moved quite quickly, given that we didn't need the executive session. Does anybody have any other?
I have a, I have a question about a clarification. So Tuesday, this coming Tuesday, we have a nine to one meeting, but then do we also have a two to four meeting? That's the work session, and our regular meeting's at four.
Yes. So my hope would be, because the work session was getting kind of lengthy, and I didn't know how much we'd need to talk at the work session after we have the UDB joint meeting, was to, instead of being from three to four for a work, work session, I'm going to push it back to two to four with the idea that we're going to take a break, like at three-thirty, so everybody can regroup, or sooner. And if things go smoothly Tuesday morning, we probably, probably won't have nearly the workload that I'm anticipating if we have to really sort some things out. It makes a long Tuesday, and I'm sorry, but.
We'll just all be sequel quotes.
And just tell me what kind of food we're going to have. I've got to plan that one. Food and snacks. Any other or points of clarification? It is four forty-seven. All in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, we're adjourned. I'm turning off the recorder. Thank you all.
And thanks Jen for giving minutes last time.
Yes.
Appreciate that.